You want me to fill it?
No, it's only getting to the meeting.
Robin, do you need a copy of the job description here? Is this helpful?
I looked for it, but I could not find it on. I thought it might be part of a charter document or my law.
I'm not actually sure. Where did you find that? Was it on the website?
Oh, I have it. I mean, it should be on the website, but I have it in my files.
That's fine. I did get some other materials off the website that seemed to be very helpful.
Dick, we're back online?
We are back online.
Just give me a minute. I have glasses, I actually.
No, but I...
Can't do much without my glasses. I did see that the these general descriptions, not the more specific ones, but I did see the function of the town administration.
It's pretty consistent with the...
Yes. Okay.
You all set?
Yes, I am.
Got the right glasses, everything? Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Sincerely, we really appreciate your attendance and your willingness to talk to us and help in our consideration. We're going to go semicircular. I guess we're going to go somewhat around the horn here with questions and the four questions are asking the same ones to each candidate. And then we'll kind of go forward.
Okay.
So who's got the opener? Oh, me, John. Even better. We're staying with the same...
Same one.
Same set of questions.
Safe comments.
Please provide some background on your career and share with the board how that experience has prepared you for being an interim town administrator, particularly in a town like Topsfield.
Okay, so I believe you've got my abbreviated resume. I retired in February of 2018. And shortly thereafter, I went, was recruited to be the town manager, active town manager in Hamilton. So I've done this before. The board gave me some very specific goals as well as some broad duties. So, and I brought my references. So I think you can talk to them if you want to about the performance of this. In my professional experience, I've heard handle personnel budgeting, capital budgeting, finance. I've written finance policies, which I see now have. You had a grant for that. Hamilton was going through that at the time. So I helped expedite that when I was in Hamilton because it had been a stalled project. I worked on some special projects there, a photo vote pay, completion of a number of projects and putting a photo vote pay project. And Ipswich Town Manager also supervises water and sewer departments and electric departments. So I've got considerable experience in water and sewer. And I know you've got some new water plant, I think, online. So I have a lot of experience in that, including rate setting and capital budgeting for water. In, not that it's particularly relevant, but in three of my four positions, I've been the first town manager. And in Ipswich, it felt like I was the first town manager. There was a lot of work that needed to be done. I served on the school building committee there. And we did get an MSBA grant, but ultimately the community was not, did not have a consensus on what they wanted. Let's see. One of the things, and I think this might be relevant to Topsfield, is I did a lot of work on downtown projects. For example, there was a wayfinding project that had been stalled for many years. People just talked about it, talked about it, talked about other studies. I actually worked to allocate funding as part of the capital planning budget. And we implemented it in three phases. We hired somebody to assist in developing the signs. We had a group from the community look over the designs and work with the designer on that. And so that has been completed. There will be ongoing signs here and there, but that project had been stalled for many years. We also, I also hired a recreation and culture director. We have the YMCA, but it was really important for people to still feel like the town had a role in recreation. So I created the recreation and culture director. And what we did was try to bring some community activities where people could come together, most notably, well, my personal favorite is dancing on the Riverwalk. We built a Riverwalk, but it was underutilized. So we tried to have cultural events there. We improved the business center, painted it, created a public restroom, a public restroom there. So we really did try to target a lot of effort to downtown. We did a retail study, a business study that was fine point associates. But anyway, they came up with some recommendations. And we provided some grant money for any consulting and grant money for any business that wanted to participate. We didn't have a lot of people participating, but we did provide assistance to them that they wanted, that we actually did outreach to them.
Robin, I just asked you, so the town actually provided grants?
Yes.
To businesses?
Right, for example, the batching grants and other, they were small ones. What we could feel that we could afford. But for example, somebody might come in and say, well, you really need to... One that comes to mind is Zumies. They said if you move your coffee stand over here, you'll have a little bit more room. You'll open it up. And he did that, and we offered the grant, but he didn't really want it or whatever. But we really did try to give some incentives to businesses to prove their signage.
To get the same touch and feel of our number correct. The idea was to establish some kind of a touch and feel which was common across Ipswich. Was that right?
Well, yes. One of the problems, the biggest problem we found was a lot of people don't have websites. And so that's a challenge that we didn't provide. They were really addressed because we really had to hire somebody to do that. People and some people weren't interested. But the study provided a lot of insight into a pathway to how to do some of these things, which we did implement and follow. So I believe that's one of your projects here. Emergency management. We developed emergency management protocol and applied for a grant, which is, I think, one of the first ones awarded where we're raising Jeffries Neck Road due to climate change. There was a climate change committee, and we did a lot of improvements in terms of energy, LED lights, streetlights, things like that. So I don't think there's anything that I have no schools. I worked very closely with schools. They had no capital plan. So when I developed a capital plan, I brought them into it. Their maintenance was awful. And we went from like a $367,000 capital fund to one that's like one and a half million we spent. So I worked closely with the finance committee in doing that. And same for water and sewer. So I think there's pretty much, done pretty much everything. Are there any gaps or any particular questions you have about what might be built at Topsfield?
We have a series of questions. Yeah, probably just go around and we're probably going to touch on.
Just before I lose the floor here and I apologize for missing the page or something. Where are you living currently? I see you were out west for a while. I see the four on three. I just wanted to make sure that...
Yes, I kept...
Come east here.
I'm nearby, and I kept myself on my schedule.
Maybe we're left here or...
Okay, so we are very fortunate to have skilled department heads in this. They're very good. They're responsible, obviously, for direct service and delivery. How would you work with them in this transitional phase? To find out any issues or to support them? What's your general approach in reaching out and working with the department heads?
Well, I would first have to say, you know, how long you contemplate this position in place and what you see the role as. For example, in Hamilton, they underdone, they had, one of their projects was working on some water, improving, they had a grant to install, improve filtration in their water treatment. So I worked closely with the DPW on that to try to expedite that and get information out to the public. So if there's a project related to department heads, I try to meet with them and work with them and set up a schedule so that it doesn't get wet. Because I know we all get consumed with everyday activities. But on the other hand, I've always had an open door policy with department directors. They've, you know, if they've had personnel issues, they come in, talk to me, and we could decide what the next course of action based on the severity of the issue and collective bargaining agreements. So I've had that kind of experience where they can come in to me.
I've always had a good relationship with the department directors. And I've got to hear that yours are very professional and competent and capable. That's not always the case with you.
I'd like to elaborate a little bit on your question if I may. Several of our boards are elected boards that don't really work for us directly. And that is primarily the Highway Department, Water Department, and Forests and Cemeteries. We expected those supervisors and directors of those departments to work with the town administrator. And that has worked, even though they actually work for their elected boards. And we've been very successful in working that out. You will be expected to work with those people on an independent basis, other than, you know, other than their own elected boards as well.
Right, well, in Ipswich was very much that way. I was elected Board of Health and elected Planning Board. I had a good relationship with all of them. In, I'm sorry, in Hadley. In Ipswich, the town manager appointed even the Planning Board. It's very strange, but in Hadley, I've worked with elected boards and committees and had a good relationship with them, assisted the Board of Health and closing land.
So you experienced the very thing I'm talking about?
Yes, and even when you have, for example, in Ipswich, you know, we had some communities that felt that they were in the panel. They might not be, but we still treated each other with respect and understanding.
And in particular, the way that you stayed in touch with the elected boards to keep that communication flowing and to make sure everybody's aligned?
Let's see. Most of that would have been in Long Meadow or Hadley. So when I was in Hadley, the internet was on Twitter. It was now, but you know, we could discuss or meet with the chairman. In Long Meadow, for example, the Planning Board was elected. I worked very closely with the chairman on zoning issues and bringing zoning to front of town. I didn't really see that as ever a problem. I mean, if you have a recommended way of you, that you prefer to have it done, I certainly opened to those suggestions. But I never felt it was a problem, the communication shut down. I feel like in a position especially like this, where you're going through a transition, there'll be a need for someone to facilitate that, kind of keep things on an even keel and keep the communication going as we deliberate on the next steps.
It's a pretty informal thing here as well. And the communication really is on a person-to-person basis. Could you share your thoughts on an interim town administrator's role in addressing pending matters? And how much of these would be kept on hold or moved forward during this interim period? In particular, collective bargaining.
I was hoping those were settled.
All but one, I think.
Okay, yeah, I read, it seemed like one was pending. I would, and I would have to ask what the board's role is in collective bargaining, whether you're a participant or whether you ratify the contracts. It's different town to town.
We've not been participants in the actual negotiation, but we do ratify the contracts.
Okay, all right. So if that was a project that you felt was important, I think from my point of view, it would be very helpful for me to know what the board wants attended to. Because as an interim, there are things that an interim manager can do and sort of go, I'm done. And the next person doesn't have to carry that, that bar, you know. But in some cases, if it's going to be a larger, more broadly, widely debated issue, that may not be the thing for the interim to participate in. So it would be very helpful for me as an interim to know those things that you feel are, need to be tidied up or should be addressed, and things that you feel that have less urgency. You know, maybe a contract doesn't have a lot of urgency in the context of other things. That will get settled at some point. But maybe you feel that it is time that it gets settled, in which case I defer to you. That's how I would approach it. I wouldn't want to just grab the bit and go charging off because that's not what an interim would be here for. I think there's, just trying to give a level of reassurance and continuity is very important to people.
Would you discuss communications with the board of selectmen? In other words, how would you work with, to keep the board of selectmen informed of what's going on so that we have a smooth transition with your coming in and then also with going and getting a permanent town administrator?
What I did in Hamilton, which seemed to work, is I take the projects, and I report on them every couple of weeks to the board, verbally and hard copy for their purposes. And any other issues that had come up, so you had some record. Most importantly, that would be helpful for the new town administrator. I make it, and I've had a lot of positive feedback from successors on this. I put together a file for every town manager that succeeds, even as an interim, that has the reports in there, that has the relevant documents in there, so they can walk in and be ready. Now, no one's ever done that for me, but I did...
You knew what you wanted, so that's how you did a good job.
And honestly, people say that they didn't lose B coming in. So I feel that that is a practice I would continue. You would have the written reports. The successor would have the written reports and the files that they need for that purpose.
So one of the things that we talked with, you said, did you have a report on projects that were going on on some periodic basis?
It was usually every couple of weeks. If it was a critical issue, you know, if there was a major water break somewhere, I would just email the board. A lot of it depends what you want to know.
Something in writing, a summary of some sort, number of few weeks or something on what's going on?
Yeah, it's usually like this. If it was, for example, in Hamilton, if it was installation of the filters, I would say, well, we got two in, two more scheduled. We're running the water now. It should be online at this point, that kind of thing.
What is your availability from this July to November? And what do you recommend is the number of days or hours per week that you need to effectively manage the town?
Well, I'm retired. So I'm available. I would want to work no more than three days a week.
Oh, three days a week, okay.
Yeah, and that's pretty typical for most interims. You know, this, again, this is a real opportunity for the board. If there's, if there are certain things that you want done and you don't want another administrator carrying baggage on that. Again, continuity, but not getting too far into the weeds. I mean, that's something your new administrator would do. And you would, of course, be discussing what those weeds would be and what your projects are and priorities are for the successor during that period. So I don't have anything scheduled.
Okay. What would you be looking for for compensation?
For Hamilton, it was $95 an hour.
Can I elaborate just a little bit, Jim? I just want to elaborate on that point a little bit. What do you see your typical work day being like? Would you see yourself as an eight to four person? Or being here when you needed to be here regardless of...
Well, I think that would be a discussion to have with the board. Being here regardless, I mean, what does that mean? Am I producing something that, a value? If you, for example, if somebody from the Planning Board needed to meet with me and that was something you supported, I would be fine doing that. But I do think this is a transitional position here to help out and to set the stage for the successor and to finish up projects. But a lot depends on what you want and what your expectations are. I don't want to fritter away your money, if you will, for just anything. You know, I imagine you're the custodians of your funds, and I wouldn't want to fritter that away. On the other hand, if there was a role, for example, the town manager, I'm going to use another example from Hamilton. The town manager served on the housing committee. And even though that isn't a typical job, they would not have had a forum had I not shown up. And it was, it was the, it was the most, the meetings were terrible, terrible. I mean, you know, people were so angry. But they needed a forum in order to discuss these housing issues that were very pressing. So I did that, you know, outside of my normal hours. So I don't have any reservations about having as many extra hours, but I think in order for my work to be meaningful, you might want, you might want to talk about what that might be taking off.
Have you found, Robin, that a consistent schedule to some degree is helpful for the employees?
Oh, yeah.
There may be times that you need to come in at night or another day, et cetera. But having some kind of regular schedule, has that worked or...
Oh, yes, there were no problems with that at all. And I see you have a summer schedule, so there's no Fridays anyway for the summer. So I always remind myself that most of these communities have been around for 300 years. And a few months is not going to kill anybody, you know. It's, whenever I get really frustrated, I'm like, it's been around for 375 years. We'll make it a few months. So I would probably discuss with the chairman, what the, and he would discuss with you, what the expectations would be about that. Everyone I know that does this and myself is usually like three days a week when it is something.
And on the other days, if something comes up, then the department heads just contact you? It's a way to reach out and...
Yes, that would be, that would be fine. I don't, I don't charge for that.
Did you have the first round too?
You do.
It's the one that introduces them.
It's whatever you choose to.
I'm going to really push my time to anybody else who...
Okay. Robin, if we reached out to past boards that you've worked with or department heads for references, what kind of feedback do you think we would get?
I think they'd say that I was, I had one tell me I was the supreme bureaucrat in the finest way, which is that, you know, I like to have structures. I like people, everybody to know what they're doing and who are the point people. Sometimes I'm not really good with loosey-goosey things. It's like, because you're dealing with people's personalities and their sense of who they are. I've also had departments say that I'm tough, but I'm fair, which to me is a good... I think it's good.
It's not bad.
No, it isn't bad. So those are, that's some of the feedback. Oh, at, when I left Ipswich, there was a sort of a going away party. And the feedback from department heads was I was a very good mentor, very good coach, that they were very grateful for that, that I taught them a lot about management. So I see myself having that capacity to sit and talk with somebody, not just do this, but let's think this through, you know, who are the stakeholders? So I think most people would cite that as well. I mean, these are things I've heard. You know, when you have a long career in municipal government, you do not, it is not always smooth sailing. So there may be some people in my past that said, she's the worst thing that ever happened to this town or whatever. But I think for the most part, you find that people respected me. They may not have agreed with me, but they respected me. And I do have some references also for Hamilton. So, thank you.
We're going this way?
I'm not ready.
We're not ready.
I'll pass for the whole. Sorry, Dick.
In your mind, Robin, what about Topsfield, if anything, distinguishes this town? And how does that influence your interest in this position? And what do you imagine you may be able to help us, based on that, accomplish during this interim period, this transition?
Am I being a guide for the full-time position?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's hard for me to answer.
I'll give you some context. We are now, we've had a dozen years of a town administrator. We've had two town administrators. A town has to learn how to operate with a new system. And indeed, there have been a lot of learning, it has been a lot of learning along the way. We are certainly at a place where we are, I believe, much better positioned to make thoughtful and truly valuable, effective decisions on folks who help in that kind of a role. This particular question, because I have another one later, but this particular one is, what is about Topsfield that you think of that is distinctive? And how does that affect your interest in the job and as an interim? And also, what do you think you might be able to, does it affect what you think you could help us do?
Well, I was very pleased to see the press release with the list of accomplishments. I think that's an extraordinary list because some towns never get there. So to me, that indicates it's not broken. And I, and that is a really good thing for me. I don't feel that I want to come in and fix a broken system. So it appears you've got a lot of good systems in there. I liked to see the part about the downtown development. I think I've got some skills in that area, some knowledge in that area, some contacts in that area. I, you know, come to your little downtown in the past. It's got some sweet shops there. You know, like every downtown, even Ipswich, so it could use a little bit more. I love this, this green with all these old buildings. It's quite lovely. And I don't think it's something people typically see. They're like most of us on Route 1. And trying to avoid Route 1 of the Topsfield Fairs in session. But it's, it does have a very sweet set town center. And it kind of reminds me of some of the town centers in western Massachusetts. Wide wooden leaves, things like that. So I think it looks sweet here. And if I, if I'm chosen for the job, I'm confident I can be able to walk somewhere and get lunch.
When you mentioned talking with people, you mentioned, you included, quote, stakeholders in this...
And certainly in municipal government, there are a number of stakeholders, whether they're residents, employees, boards, committees, even the Commonwealth and youth and elders and taxpayers and taxpayers and all of those. In a sense, when you think about all of those, however, out of all of those, to whom do you really answer first?
Well, I think the job description is pretty clear. It's the town administrator reports to the board of selection. And there are other duties that apparently they have. Now, I will say, do you have a charter or a bylaw?
Bylaw.
So the bylaw defines a lot of that as well. And that's often... You know, there are times when you get into issues and I'll cite an example. I try to... I've worked for some very challenging boards early in my career. Challenging is an understatement. And it took... They didn't really understand that they worked as a board as opposed to just one individual. "I'm a board member and I can do..." No, you know, talk to the board, see what the board wants to do, and then I'm good with that. So sometimes it's getting people to work in concert with each other. But the administrator reports to the board's selectmen. But if there is a bylaw that obligates the administrator to do certain things, then that should not be usurped.
Okay. There's something different.
Yeah, I mean, there were people in Ipswich that didn't like the way the charter was written. And I had to say, "Well, rewrite the charter." I mean, this is constitutional document. It obligates me to do that. It's not me. It's, you know, we're all sworn in to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth and the community and I take that seriously. But I would prefer to negotiate issues.
I can't think of anything particular in the bylaw that we have. It's not particularly large by law. It's not a fat page of all the things that are in it, of which the town administrator is one of. Anything that would conflict with what you first said?
Yep.
Any further questions?
I was particularly interested in your involvement in the development of downtown Ipswich because there's been a lot done over there in the last ten year, fifteen years. I hear, I have a lot of friends in Ipswich because I've been a member of the Ipswich Bay Yacht Club for twenty-five years. I've got a lot of friends in Ipswich. So I hear pros and cons about it all the time, but that's a side point. I'm interested in your experience there and I realize that you're being considered for an interim town administrator here in Topsfield. But as I said earlier, ours, my single biggest concern is the death of our little shopping center here. That's privately owned. We have not been able to figure out how to get that owner out of there. There are a couple of people that are, a couple of outfits ready to buy it if we can get him out of there. So as I said, even though you're going to be here as an interim, I'll be interested in hearing your thoughts about how we can address that issue. If you become our interim, we'll be spending some time together talking about it.
Well, you know, the challenge with downtown development and, you know, it's not necessarily businesses, but sometimes it's the property owners. And, you know, I would hear complaints like, "The rents are too high." I cannot help you with that. But we did have community forums about business development and the downtown and doing this presentation at Fine Point together. And we invited their comments, you know, business owners' comments to it. And, you know, they were included along the way. But when it gets to, "Your rents are too high, we can't," you know. But we did make an effort to include property owners. Property owners. And in some cases, property owners don't care or their property is a write-off or I'm not sure what it is, but it's a real challenge sometimes to get property owners involved. The business people are all in, but sometimes engaging with property owners is a challenge. But I'd be happy to share what we did there.
Well, John and Lynn are particularly involved in a downtown revitalization study.
Yeah, I saw that.
They're much more at the speed on that whole thing than I am, but...
Do you have consultants?
Working with MAPSIE right now.
Yeah.
That's a count. Chief of Economic Development and are engaged in a strategic planning effort kicking off meeting for the working group coming next week.
So exciting.
And so we expect more or less over the term of the interim, town administrator to have that work going forward.
Yeah, that sounds like fun.
But there's very broad support for it. But at this stage of the game, as you know, everybody's going in every different direction. And so we're looking to create processes that will allow us to sort of do some channeling, funneling, filtering, and beginning to develop what we hope will be a common vision or more common vision than perhaps exists right now. And frankly, a broader one than I... People tend to say, "Fix the shopping center," or "Do this," or "Do that." I think we need to take a look and we are starting to look at everything from the north end of the Commonwealth all the way down and think, "Where do we want to be in twenty years, not just in five?"
And to your point, Robin, about the property owners, we have a working group that will be kicking off next week. And we have two property owners who are on that. And actually, Boyd had mentioned before, we've got a lot of great people in town, whether they're volunteers or employees and property owners and businesses.
That's great.
They're very receptive right now. Apart from some isolated situations that, you know, we were working with folks, they're very supportive.
Right, and it's great.
And liking to participate, which is wonderful. To that end, could you just talk a little bit about your experience in researching and obtaining grants? In particular, the two...
The technical assistance grant.
Yes, that's actually the grant that we got to do at MAPSIE.
And Ipswich, we have a planning department. So my planners, you know, would say, "Can we get grants on this?" And we got several technical assistance grants.
We don't have a planning...
What?
We don't have a planning...
No, I know. He's retired, he might come back and help.
I know. We're already... We're looking.
What would Glenn tell me if I asked him to tell me about you?
He would say that I was a great supporter of his efforts in the downtown, that I made sure he got money to do what he needed to do. There was a Riverwalk extension and there was a lot of discussion about whether that should be, money should be spent. But I included it in the capital budget. And it was debated after I left, after I retired. But Glenn said, I guess some of the selectmen are against it, but Glenn, and maybe the finance committee, but Glenn stood up. The town felt it was important to start, you know, bringing, extending the Riverwalk because the intent is to extend it, put it along the Wood River behind where the buildings are. There is a property owner that is not in support of that, so that's an obstruction. But it's, they're going to do their grand opening on Thursday. But, you know, I work very closely with Glenn on funding things. The Wayfinding Grant, getting a consultant on board for that.
Any other...
The ability to communicate within the government environment involves a number of stakeholders. We talked about this residents or whatever else, but the issue here is that of communication. And as I said, residents are really the ones that we want to be able to communicate at some points in time, such as when there's a hurricane or when the British are coming, you know, how do you get the word out, so to speak?
Do you have a...
My question part is based on your experience, so to speak. What do you consider best management practices in today's, currently, in today's technology that towns should be at? At what level should we be at? There's a reverse nine-one, there's Facebook, there's websites, there's any number of various things. But from your experience, what do you think a town ideally would be at with best management practices?
Well, it's sort of a multi-tier approach. We used, I know we call it reverse nine-one-one, but it was Red Alert was what we had.
It was never one?
It was called Red Alert.
Red Alert, oh, it's red code red.
It was black code red, yeah. And before that it was Blackboard Connect. Anyway...
Which of the two, by the way? You had both or just one?
We had Blackboard Connect and then we went with Code Red because it was a better deal. And we had a very good emergency management director. He was actually a police lieutenant and he loves emergency management. So we would use that notification system for emergencies, for reminders of town meeting. But we were careful and elections. We were very careful not to overuse it because then people don't like, it's like a robocall for them. The problem is, of course, is you don't get people's cell phones. You know, it's tied into their landlines. So it's really hard to, you know, get people to sign up, even though the website can go, the town's website can go in and sign up for it. But we used that. We got some sign boards. I mean, those are blatantly obvious, but we got, through the capital budget, we bought some sign boards and would program them, town meeting or community forum or business forum, whatever it was, we put that out in key areas too. We have, we upgraded the website when I was there, I see that you've also done that. And I think websites are underutilized. I think there's a way to list things that you can go there and just bring it up, the screen up, and it says, you know, "Forum on the, you know, town center tonight," you know, or "Next week," or whenever. And I noticed, when I've, I've noticed since I've left, they don't really keep this out there because part of it is getting department heads and other boards and committees to understand that this is a tool they can use and they should be using and keeping it updated and relevant. A lot of people use Facebook. I have to tell you, I'm not a fan of Facebook. There's a couple of reasons. One is security issues. Some people just will not sign up for it, if they can't wait now. Secondly, certain departments will capture it and there are no rules for it. Public safety, it's no offense here, but often they love Facebook, but what are the rules for posting there? People get in trouble posting opinions on things like that. So if you're going to use Facebook, there have to be standards for everybody associated with the town and policies for that because they're loosely used. There, I don't think there is a perfect system. At least with Code Red, if you have people's numbers, you can do, you know, not just calls, but texts and a lot of emails if you can get that, capture that information. But I think it's really up to also public safety personnel and accounts on aging and everybody to work to get that crucial information. As an example, we've had, you know, we get storms out there, you know, nobody can get down Jeffrey's neck road. And people would call worried about their elder relatives. But we didn't have people's emails, so we couldn't communicate with them. So they didn't know what was going on. And so I think in working with accounts on aging, for example, to make sure that not just the elders are signed up, but their contact people. So I think it has to be a multi-pronged, you know, effort and has to be taken seriously and it often isn't. And you can't just do it once. You know, so if you pick, you know, when you change clocks and you change your batteries, also make sure your emergency contacts are updated, something along those lines. But there is no perfect system. I used to, we used to judge that everybody wants a phone call. We can do that now, but people don't put their cell phones into it and people are relying less and less on landlines.
So I'm going to step in trying to be fair to all candidates giving us someone on schedule. But I'd like to give you the opportunity, if you have need to ask us any questions about Topsfield or the position.
I'm interested in what you want out of this position. You know, what you're looking for from this position. You've asked me a lot of questions that relate to my career. But an interim position is a unique position, a unique opportunity for you to finish some things or do finite projects or just, you know, keep both steady. What is it you're looking for here?
That's a wonderful way to allow me to segue into what I said I would probably ask later. I think certainly stability. Me, somebody who knows how to mine a store and has enough experience running stores that, you know, how to adapt to this particular type of store, use the metaphor. And another piece that I think is certainly not primary, but I think potentially very valuable for us, as I said before, we're only on our second town administrator. We're still learning. We have learned a lot. And as we are maturing and as the environment changes and so on, now as we go out and look for a permanent town administrator, support of an experienced town administrator who is here as an interim in helping guide us, add value to our process, everything from...
I'd love to do that.
Job descriptions to these are the things. Because as board of selectmen, we don't, we don't get to hire that many people that way. We're not experts at it and we're different people than we're here even six years ago. Some of us are different. And I think that would be a really positive aspect and could really help us, I think, get a little further ahead than we would if we just work on this ourselves.
I've always likened searching for an applicant or researching candidates and searching for that special person as speed dating for, you know, in terms of, you've got a limited amount of time to figure out, is it going to be a good match? I mean, somebody can have all the skills in the world, but what you need to find is somebody who is a good match for the community. And I always think that's the most critical because people can learn about your community, they can learn about your values, but finding someone that's, you know, sensitive to the community, knows where to take people the next step because I sense there's a next step in there. What are we going to be in the future gathering that and working with the board to build a plan? It's very, you know, it's critical that you find, you know, as you go through this speed dating process, you find a good match. I'm very strong on those issues. I believe in that.
I'd like to take the opportunity to get your experience as you're here to tell us things that we're doing well and things that perhaps we could do better or different based on your experience. That's one, just a side that I would greatly appreciate.
I'm happy to say that I looked through here. I went to the announcement and found the... I looked through here and I think what it tells me is you've made a lot of progress. I was very impressed by this. I think it sounds to me like the downtown or center development is a critical issue for you now to create some identity around that. It sounds like you have nuts and bolts in place, but the next step is... You've got the ingredients here to build what you want. And so what I'm hearing is that's the next step is to do these things that are more quality of life issues. And I may be wrong about that, but...
Let me try it this way too. I mean, just because I happen to ask it as an example, as communication. Did you come in, you're looking at us and you're saying, "Well, you know, you really don't have that good a communication system to call out if there's something more. I understand that you have the RECC, but you haven't used them well to do..." Just your experience helping us with any of these to bring these forward, but even some of the smaller things, you know, why are you so concerned about signage in your town? Or whatever it may be. We had a town where we put the signs up and the people really loved them. All I'm saying is you have experience from different towns.
Well, that would be something I...
We would appreciate, I would appreciate, as you work through here and you see things, you say, "You know, I haven't seen a town that does it this way, but you really found a good way to do that," or...
So you're not asking for her to say that now, you're saying that's what you would like for the interim.
As part of the...
Right.
Oh, definitely.
What would you like to get?
Every time I, well, I can tell you I left a report for the selectmen and for the new town administrator in, in Hamilton. So I do that. Because I think it's important that you know where you are, some things I've observed, what you can improve. We really, I put together the warrant there for the, their special town meeting. And I did not understand why, for example, they use their town council to put together a warrant. The warrant is very... I don't know what you do, but I'm like, of course, town managers put together a warrant. You know, you write the articles, you explain them, you insert, you know, whatever the recommendations are. But I couldn't understand why they did that. And I just think it was their council wanted to draw that line.
And maybe there's a good reason why, but the fact that you would ask us that because your experience says, doesn't seem to be, that's, that's one thing I would like to...
Sure, of course.
You to be doing while you're here. Not the key thing, but I would consider that a great help, your experience.
Sure.
So our time is, we're really, we don't want to get too far.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to be like this. One of the things that I will be looking for in a temporary town administrator is to create an anchor, a focal point in this building for the employees to know who's in charge.
That's good news.
Continually, that's the stability issue, okay? We've had two or three people say to us already, "I need to know who's going to be in charge," okay? So we, you know, that's, that's one of the major things.
Which is what a good interim would do, to bring that sense of calm and stability in a person that everybody knows they go to, that can keep the ship moving forward.
Anything that isn't filling potholes or painting lines, if they're, they're, yeah.
So obviously, we're not always good at knowing who's in charge.
Well, I tend to have a personality that kind of lets people know.
Good.
Not in a bad way, but, you know, let's talk this over first. Do you want to think this over before you go out there? It's thinking over who are the stakeholders, who should we inform?
I believe that shortly after coming aboard, you're, there's going to be a list of pending issues.
Right.
And some of those will be long-term, some will be short-term. And the short-term issues you can go to work on immediately, and the long-term issues will be left for somebody else to do down the road.
I just want to say one more thing. In Hamilton, the board gave me a list of projects. These are the things we want you to do. If you get to them, here are some things. I was able to get through all the walks, down until I hear some extras. And we cleaned out the town hall records. We did a huge cleanup. It was, the records were a disaster there, so I, I like me...
We're making progress there too, but we've still got work to do.
So I want to very sincerely thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for giving me the chance to do this.
Last note, it's our intent and hope to move very quickly towards offering a position to an interim.
Okay.
And we are scheduled, again, sometimes things happen in life, but that aside, we're scheduled to have that discussion, that vote on the 26th.
All right. I, as I said, I don't have anything scheduled. I just want to grab my, do you want my...
You can give them to Debbie, that would be really helpful.
I did include them. And I did include a more extensive resume. And I'll leave that here too because I, I'm never sure how much people are looking for before they follow this or these things. And I have, I've got a few cards, so anybody who wants to...
Thank you.
You're welcome to them. Thank you so much, Mike.
Debbie will do it.
It was a pleasure talking with you.
And you too. Robin, thank you very much.
Thank you. It was a real pleasure talking with you. Good luck, and on living network.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks for the water.
You're welcome.
Although I'm a little disappointed I didn't see any of those finales.
There we go, you gotta go upstairs.
Ooh, what's upstairs?
Wondering.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Lynn.
Nice to meet you, person.
Lovely to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Boyd and...
Nice to meet you, Debbie. Thank you.
And nice to meet you, Chuck.
Nice to see you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
John?